Okay, I would like to open the Monday, October 28th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. Can we all stand, please stand to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't think we have anyone for public comment. And can I get, Mike, you want to approve the warrant?
I can read the warrants.
Read it for approval.
If I can find a first page of this document.
I can do it, please.
Go ahead.
I got it.
Okay, good.
All right, good.
Motion to approve payroll warrant 20-17 in the amount of $173,351.95.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Motion to approve bill warrant number 20-17 in the amount of $986,752.72, which breaks out to...
Good.
Jumping the gun. Town, $55,251.58. Water and sewer, $20,662.97. Payroll withholding, $26,697.72. Health insurance, $66,460.36. Light bills, $313,383. Grants and revolving, $24,783.2. Chapter 90, $86,416.7. Whittier assessment, $183,098. And stabilization and O-PED transfers, $210,000.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Okay, so moving on, we have to approve the minutes from the September 30th, 2019 meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we have some appointments. We have the appointment of Jason Naves of 150 Main Street to the Open Spaces and Trails Committee through June 30th, 2020. Is Jason here?
Yes.
You want to go up? Well, thank you very much for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
And I don't know if the board members have anything you want to say or start with Kathy?
No, we're just glad to have the volunteerism. You have an impressive letter and thank you for stepping forward.
Ed, you good?
No, I'm all set.
Bill?
I've had the pleasure of having some long discussions with Mr. Naves. I think he'll be an excellent candidate.
I look forward to it.
Good for him.
Mike?
Oh, good, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming in and thank you for stepping up and look forward to working with you.
Motion to appoint Jason Naves of 150 Main Street to Open Spaces and Trails Committee through June 30th, 2020.
Second. Any further discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jason, you can go right to the town clerk and get sworn in if you'd like.
We have an appointment of Chris Soretta of 3 Ashcroft Circle to the Open Spaces and Trails Committee through June 30th. Is Chris here? Again, thank you for stepping up to the plate. I'll make it simple as anyone, have any they want to say to Chris?
No.
Everyone? Again, thank you.
I look forward to working with the town. I'm relatively new here, I've been about a year. I think what intrigued me was the Mass Stop project that's coming through next year. I'm a consultant, I'm a civil engineer by trade. So my thought is that be able to help the town with that and then expanding our bike trails and, you know, any time of community improvements that we can with our infrastructure. So looking forward to that and giving back to the community. So, thank you.
And a motion?
Yes, a motion to appoint Mr. Chris Soretta of 3 Ashcroft Circle to the Open Spaces and Trails Committee through June 30th, 2020.
Second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Go across the hall and get sworn in.
Okay. So now we have discussion and possible vote. Jim Day of the Bagnell School Assistant Principal seeking the board's support for CPA submission of a new playground at the Bagnell School. Thank you, Jim.
Good evening, thank you. So thank you Chairman Dunn, thank you board for having me here tonight, I really appreciate it. I'm going to, just for a second before I start, I'm going to, I know you may have already gotten in your packets and notes, but I may have some extra things that I may talk about with the playground, so I just brought some extra.
More paper.
So let me just start a couple of things. Name's Jim Day, the Assistant Principal at the Bagnell Elementary School, but also a resident of Groveland, live at 2 Coddles Ferry Lane. And I'd like to start just with letting you know, this is a proposal for CPC funds. I want to start with the why. We're looking at doing this and kind of where we're at with the existing playground that we have at Bagnell School right now. So back in July, I started taking on, looking into the playground that we have at the Bagnell and went through the building with our building inspector, Sam, Sam Jowson, and also had a gentleman from O'Brien out and walk the playground with me. Currently, our playground is shut down for two grade levels. So there are two grade levels that cannot use the playground. And the reason why is after going through the playground, we realized that there are some apparatuses out on the playground that, number one, do not meet the codes anymore for the height-to-ground requirements. So about 50% of the playground right now for kids six years and younger, those apparatuses are not acceptable for them. Also, we have an accessibility problem on the playground. We have students with mobility disabilities and they cannot access the playground at all. The mulch that is on the ground prevents them from accessing the playground and the equipment that was built back in 2002, which is when the playground was built, is not adequate for accessibility for these children. So this year, we have two grade levels. If we do not do something about the playground, next year will be three grade levels because right now we have two students that cannot access the playground and a possibility of a third entering the school next year. So right there legally, we are not meeting those requirements for those students, those needs. That is my biggest issue. Those of you that know me, I hope know that I am about doing what's best for all children, not just children that are the athletes, not just children that are the artists. I want all kids to find success. And what bothers me when I go out at recess and I look at this playground is I see that there are areas that these kids cannot access. I see that a child who goes around the playground with a walker, if you could picture this in your mind, and is playing with a group of friends, and then that group of friends wants to play tag around the playground, or that group of friends wants to go to the playground, and that group of friends takes off and starts running by, but this child with the walker has to stop at the bark mulch because they cannot go play with those friends because their walker cannot go on there. Child with a wheelchair, same thing. Cannot go on that, mulch cannot play with their friends. You know, I had the joy growing up that I would play with my friends at recess and I had those great memories playing around. And I want all kids to be able to have that. And that's what I'm looking at with this proposal here, is that our playground is nearing 20 years old and we have done in this town, and I compliment the board and the volunteers in the board for tremendous efforts and tremendous jobs with recreation and what they have brought up to the town and what is being built in the town. But I think this is a step here for full inclusiveness so all children can get something that provides, whether it's a child with mobility disabilities or whether it's cognitive issues, this playground that you have in front of you, the proposal has sensory walls for children, whether it's autistic children, different cognitive disabilities, that's what an all-inclusive playground is. And I would love to see us as a town, and we are doing it at our school, move to be an all-inclusive playground so all kids can enjoy that time. If you have any questions, I did put two proposals in there for you. Both proposals that are done for you were done by O'Brien and Sons. They are the ones who did the playground over at the Pines that is being done currently or maybe finished, I don't know. Is it finished yet Denise, or no?
It's finished, but not accessible yet.
Okay, not accessible yet. So you'll see in the two proposals, the first one, which is the one that I believe the total is 322,000. That is the all-inclusive playground, which is a full poured, all-poured rubber ground, the safety ground. That means that any child, walker, wheelchair, whatever it is, can move about that playground free at will, no restrictions whatsoever, ramps on the playground so they can experience everything with it. The second proposal you'll see is around 275. That is a playground that meets ADA requirements, but is not all-inclusive, meaning the child would not be able to access all parts of the playground because if they have a walker or they have a wheelchair, they would not be able to go on the mulch part of the playground. It gives them access to the playground, but again, like I started in the beginning, if their friends are playing off in different areas, they are limited to certain areas of the playground they can go on to. I will let you know that with the proposal you see in front of you today, after some work at our school, I did just find out today that we have been accepted for a $5,000 grant towards the playground. So the totals that you see before you today, I can guarantee to you that $5,000 will be taken off of that for a grant that we applied for and were accepted for towards a new playground. I'm happy to take any questions. I do, with the Chairman Dunn's permission, I do have a parent that wanted to speak to you all, and I don't know if you'd rather do questions first or hear from that parent first.
I think I'd rather hear from the parent first.
Sure.
Hey guys, Ben Hockmuth, I am a native of Groveland, I graduated from Penn Tucket.
Can you spell your name, I can't really hear you.
Ben Hockmuth, H-O-C-H-M-U-T-H.
Thank you.
So grew up in Groveland, went to Bagnell, graduated from Penn Tucket, left here, came back to raise my family. My son has the walker, so he has cerebral palsy and he's got a, many of you might have seen him at events throughout Groveland, but basically he navigates life with his walker. He can go over smooth surfaces really easily, but anytime you get a little bit of a non-smooth surface, he's navigating that, picking up the walker, it's not easy. So exactly what Jim said, kids run through there, he's now finding an alternative path. I asked him tonight, I showed him the plans, I was like, what would you do in this area that potentially is mulch? And he's like, no, that's not good. I need flat surface like the street so that I can run fast. And I was like, I got you, man. So, you know, where you guys are going to review this and be responsible on behalf of the town, I think some places that you're going to look to cut would be a $50,000 reduction for, you know, kind of taking out a section of it, but I'm here to say I think it's in the best interest of the town and the kids, anybody especially that has some sort of disability like this, to kind of stick with the full paved area basically. So that's kind of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for? Everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, not for Ben, no.
All right, thank you. So Jim?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to talk to Jim?
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
Go ahead.
So I read through this earlier today and I don't think anybody up here would deny a new playground if it was something easy to do, right? The cost is significant and that's one of the hard decisions that we have to make is costs associated with the projects. Now this, you're requesting CPA funds.
Correct.
So the questions I would have are how much, this probably goes towards Mike, how much money is in that CPA account that can get put towards this type of project? And then on top of that, we also have, I think, already agreed or voted on a CPA project for boat dock or crew facility down at the Pines, so that's going to come out of that account. And there's also talk of other CPA projects associated with something down at the Pines, something down at one of the other fields, so you're contending with some other things. Now, I appreciate the project at the school, I mean, that goes a long way, it helps a ton of people and especially some of the people with special needs, but it really comes down for me what we have in that account that can go towards these type of projects. And I don't, I don't know.
I'd just like to comment if you don't, if I can, Selectmen, what I, so at one of your recent meetings that I watched, I think it was beginning of October, I had heard that in the recreation fund was over $400,000 for CPC, obviously.
For this type of project?
For recreation, in recreation. So with that in mind, that's why I pursued this. Obviously, I respect the board's decision. Your decision that you make hopefully will benefit the town. And as I said earlier, your decisions that you have made have really improved recreation in this town. You've done an incredible job and the volunteers in this town have done an incredible job. But the one area, I think we keep, the money keeps going towards recreation, which is great and the job is great, but again, I'm going to go back to a full inclusionary recreation facility. We don't have that. It'll be great for us as a town if we can say, we're going to do this for all of our kids in Groveland and look to build something at our school that is a full inclusion in our recreation area at the Bagnell. Also, I heard at one of your recent meetings talking about finishing the Pines. Let's finish a project, let's finish a project. Well, in my mind, this is one of those pieces that could finish a lot of the things going on at the Bagnell. In the last 10 years, we built an addition at the Bagnell, we fixed the field, a field that people thought could never be fixed and now looks beautiful thanks to your efforts. We had that fully new paved side of the parking lot. And now I look at this playground that is not accessible to so many students and we finished this playground and now we have an area our school, which should be a focus for us, can be finished. Of course, there's going to be things along the way that are going to come up. I know we went through the tour of the building recently and there are things that every year we're going to have to build that, but if we can take on this big item here and finish this area back there where we have this field, we have this playground, we have this new addition to Bagnell, well then, yeah, we're taking Bagnell and we're putting a sense, saying, you know what, we've done what we can with Bagnell. We've made this a really nice elementary school for our kids.
Can I just make a quick comment? I just want to caution everybody that the board does not approve this project. The board would offer support for it to go to Community Preservation, that's the committee that approves the final project. So whatever the Board of Selectmen may vote tonight, it still has to go through another round and then it would have to go to town meeting for approval. So their vote doesn't mean the project is passed. I just want to let everyone know that.
Do you have something, Kathy?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments and questions. I like the idea of the all-inclusive playground because we don't have one like that in town. I don't think the River Pines is, that has mulch, right?
It's under the structures, it's mulch.
Yeah, so that's mulch as well. Would this be accessible after school hours, like for grandparents and people also that might have walking difficulty to be able to spend time with the grandchildren?
So the other thing is, yes, sorry. So the other thing is too, this is town land.
Yep.
So this is your playground that community members can access after school hours, is fine at night, also for your summer program. You have 150 kids that attend the summer program and what a significant thing this would be for the summer program to add towards that, so.
So as far as the access to it, like if you're not coming through the school building, if you're parking and trying to come around, will there be, do we have a smooth pathway to it right now?
Yes. So right now, right now, there's a pavement road that goes around the building and then there's a continuing pavement road that goes out to the basketball courts, driving, you could drive right up to the playground.
Okay. And during the wintertime, are you expecting that you're going to be able to clear this of snow at times when it's warm enough?
Yep, so the facilities, that's one of the reasons for doing this way, is because if we do it this way, the facilities at Bagnell can use their snow blower to snow blow the whole area out because it's flat, the rubberized piece where if there's mulch there...
It can handle a snow blower?
If there's mulch there, they can't do anything with it, but it can handle the snow blower, yes. And they could clear it off.
And what is the expected life of this type of, I'm more interested in the surface?
So he tell, yep, so he tells me more than 25 years.
More than 25 years, okay.
And so having them do it, obviously there's a warranty on the stuff as well, so having a, you know, I know, I think I've heard in the past and we're saying, oh, can we get some parent volunteers to come in to put it together to save on the cost? We can't do that because we want, we want the warranty on it.
And then there was one document that said, this is really important to read, so I did read it. It had like bold print on it and it seemed to be saying, you know, that this price might not stay in, do you know the document I mean that was?
Yeah, so at the, at their, when they talk about...
A lot of bold print.
Yeah, so they talk about, they talk about in the proposal, and again, this is a proposal.
Right.
In the proposal, it talks about how much the equipment would be, and then it talks about how much the surfacing would be, and then after that, it talks about the labor for them to put it together, which I was just talking about, that's the approximate cost that they say.
I find this a really valuable idea for the town to make a place that's totally inclusive for anyone that has any mobility or sensory issues. It's a work in a school building, so I know that there's a lot more prevalent than ever used to be and I just think for our community to have this would be a really, a really big step for us and it'd be, if it's open to the public too, to come down after school hours and spend time there, and that means anybody with mobility issues can come down and spend some time there. So this would be in the middle of the grass area?
Nope, so the grass area would stay as is.
Okay.
And then right now, we have almost like an L-shaped pavement area with a basketball court and then a nice open area pavement, and then you have the big playground. That playground would be removed and this new playground would go right in the same spot. Like when doing this, I envisioned things like you had your little kickers or pre-K soccer kickers, you know, out on that field now. There's been some other sports teams I know I've been hearing have had interest with the baseball fields and stuff. What a great thing to have this playground, basketball courts, families out on that field playing soccer, baseball, those things, just seems like a nice area to have that facility.
And just getting back to the bold print page and some of the things that it said that, you know, 30 days, 30 days, this is good for, you know, because of our process in town, of course, you have to come through now for approval, and when you get to town meeting, would you update that?
So yeah, I think that's the process that I've understood all along, this is that you are approving this, but the proposals are going to be proposals and then you solidify things as you get approved.
Right, well, once it goes to town meeting though, we're going to have to...
Then it's, then it's, then right then, starting July 1st, then we have the absolute amount. If I, if this were to get passed through CPC, then it has to be done. This is it.
I support the concept, I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, you answered a couple of the questions, the location and the accessibility after school hours, but you know, when you're using CPA funds, you're aware that any of the communities, the people in the other community?
Yes, in fact, I know in a discussion I had had Denise about something else, I mean, our current playground, nothing changes with that, people can access that current playground whenever they want to, right now, because it's town land. It's kind of an interesting situation with the school being on town land and people being able to access the playground, but yes.
I'm all set, yep.
Yeah, real quick, so the main difference between the two quotes is the 2,700 square feet that would totally make it completely ADA accessible, right? I mean, the footprint, the design is basically the same.
Basically the same.
Quote, but it's the, it's basically the difference in this part here.
Correct, so kind of almost like your back page of the one I just handed to you shows, I know it's not in color, but it shows more of a layout where it's almost like a circular mulch area around the playground area. And I will say that the sec...
These two.
The, yes, yep, so that second one there, the yellow part of your piece of paper there would be the mulch.
Right.
Yep, and the blue part would be the rubber.
And it would be all rubber.
That's all rubber. The thing is that the all rubber is the ADA, but it's also the all-inclusive because a kid can go anywhere they want to at any time. The mulch is still going to be ADA certified with having the mulch because the rubber still makes it accessible, but it's not all-inclusive. The child would not be able to go anywhere on the playground they want to go.
If, if you got the go-ahead, when do you think this would be completed?
My hope would be that if it got the go-ahead, passed to town meeting, that then July 1st, when...
You're probably looking at the same timeframe because it's the exact same timeline of the Pines. So July 1, we awarded the contract, worked out some details with the rubber, and then they started it when the equipment was available. So you're probably looking at this time next year.
Okay. You know me, I'm all for the kids and this is a great idea. Is that much equipment really needed? I mean, have you scoped it out and said, we're going to need all this stuff?
So he and I, yeah, we did walk the grounds, he and I, and one of, and I'm not sure if it's in that pamphlet, but I can get it to you, but there is a requirement that they have about how many structures need to be in a certain type of playground, so they'll have a number for it. So he has to have so many structures for it to be classified as a certain type of playground, whether it's ADA inclusive, so they've met that number in every, in every step. Because I was thinking, oh, could we cut a structure here or cut a structure there, save some money? But the answer to that was no, this is the layout you have to do to be all-inclusive and make sure, especially with the number of children we would have using the playground. We have, at a regular recess, we have about 72 max kids out there, but then we have sometimes where there's a crossover where we have 100 to 120 kids out there at recess at the same time.
Some are coming, some are going.
Correct.
Right. I think it's a great noble idea, I mean, Washington Park was redone, they love it. We're really looking forward to open the Pines, I think they're going to love that. This is the next logical step to the playgrounds in the town. My concern is much like Selectmen Woods, it's, you know, making sure we have the money to cover that with a lot of the other wants and needs around. And that's my major concern, I mean, if I had a million dollars in the bank, I'd give it to you right now to make it happen.
I appreciate that. This project and sitting there with O'Brien and Sons, talking with other contractors about this type of project, when they first hit me with the money and I heard how much it was going to cost, and then I started looking about it, but the bottom line for me was, you know, as I said in the beginning, it's about what's best for kids and I kept plugging away at this because no matter what the money is, you want to build a playground this, you want to take that step to do what's best for all kids, that's the cost that it's going to be. And I wouldn't have felt good about myself not doing what's best for kids and making the push, no matter, even though the money is going to be high for a playground like that, I understand that.
One thing I didn't see in here, and I might have missed it, who's going to remove the old playground?
So you may see in the CPA funding requested, which is on page three. So, letter D, project costs, it says total cost of proposed project is 322. With my $5,000 grant, that brings it to 317. But notice above there, the request says 330.
Yeah.
I put that in because I know when it came to the Pines or other project, there was talk of highway, maybe removing the project, but I wanted to put cost in there to pay them. It wasn't something I was expecting that someone in town was going to do for free. They do not remove any of the equipment, so it would be a cost. That's why I put some, a percentage in there higher for a discussion to be had about someone in town, whether it's a highway department, if they were so willing to be able to remove the structure. I didn't want to go right at 322 because I knew we would need some extra money for that stuff.
Yeah, I have no idea what that would cost either. I'm assuming you could sell part of it, you could scrap part of it, you know?
You can't sell it.
Scrap it?
They're not safe, that's why we had to just trash the ones from the Pines. They're not sold.
Yeah, even scrap metal's only going to give you two cents a pound, I know.
So Jim?
Yeah?
Number one, we do something in this town, we usually do it right. So if we buy a highway truck, we buy the best. We buy a fire truck, we buy the best. So me personally, I don't want to sit there and say to some kid, you can't go on it because we went for the lesser model. So I would scrap the lesser model personally and go for the better model, okay? That way there, our purpose here tonight is have the conversation about letting everyone go on that playground, and I agree. As far as the grants, that was it for grants, you can't get any more money in grants that was as high as you could go.
I'm not saying there aren't any more grants out there. There could be grants that I could look at going forward, but I wanted to come before this board first. Because I can't guarantee, I could put, that first grant that we put in, it was months before we heard back from them. I could put in for more grants to see if I could bring the money down some more, but I don't know how long it would take to hear back from them.
And it probably wouldn't bring it down a lot.
Correct.
But a lot of these guys already answered my, some of my questions were, how long would the equipment last, that's been answered, and the costs fluctuate, when you're saying the cost is going to fluctuate. I used to install these with my company and we don't do it anymore because the ADA requirement, you almost have to send your guys to school now, they have to be certified, and this equipment, if there's one scratch in it, believe it or not, when it comes out, and if I'm the contractor, I scratch it, I own it. So it's not worth doing it. So there's specialty companies that do this. not worth doing it. So there's specialty companies that do this. They're paid a lot of money. They pay the prevailing wage, plus they're a specialty company. So that's why the price is the price, is because there's kids involved, there's height levels involved, there's a lot involved in this. It's not like, like you say, volunteers can't do it anymore. It's such a big thing.
Right.
But I think most of the questions have been answered. And I definitely think it's a worthy project. You know me, I mean, I'd rather do this than buy land. And I don't, you know, it's just the way it is. I mean, we need this. We need to invest in our infrastructure in town. This is one piece of infrastructure we need to invest in. So I don't know if we can vote on this tonight, because we haven't seen all the CPC projects in front of us yet. This is probably one of the first one I've seen for the most part. But I would say, as far as I'm concerned, I'm on board with it, and I think it's a well-worthy project. And I would go the whole gamut. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go.
I think we could make a motion of support for it. And obviously, we don't approve this project, but we could, as a board-
Sure.
-vote in general to support this moving forward.
That wants to ask a question.
Yeah. Mr. Day, one quick question. You see it all over the place, right? People trying to do things, support a project, right?
Right.
Have you thought about trying to cut the cost by putting one of those big thermometers out there and saying, hey, we need so much? I'll write you the check for the first hundred.
So we did. In fact, we've talked about different fundraising we can do. In fact, our PTA, and I discussed one thing that look at doing was to have like a brick pathway that would go to the playground, that people could buy a brick where their name was engraved into the brick, and make a walkway to the playground, if that was the case. I think we do at the school right now quite a bit of fundraising. There's a lot of things that we fundraise for. We are trying to do more inclusive things in our building and build more fundraising. And I guess I was concerned about tapping out people too much when it comes to fundraising. But I agree with you. That conversation has come up. I was kinda judging to see how this went today. And then, when it comes to the CPC to make their decision, to look at it from that point and see, what do we do from there? Do we look for donations? Is the money short a little bit? An example would be if 275, where the mulch was the money that was available, I'm, with Chairman Dunn, I would, you know, I wanna go for the best of the best and do what's best for kids. So then I would look to say, you know, I wanna get it up there to the price that we can do the thing that's right. And then I would look for the options after that. It's not something that I would give up on at all. But my hope was, hearing that some money was available in recreation fund and the importance of this project, my hope was to come before you first and see about support for that.
Yeah. And I agree with Chairman Dunn, and I agree with you. We should go for the whole nine yards. You know, the worst thing, in my opinion, is seeing a bunch of kids having a good time and one kid over there that can't.
Right.
That just breaks my heart. And I'm tapped out, too. But you know what? A lot of us are tapped out, and I think you'd still have a lot of generous people that's saying, you know what? I can spare a buck for this kind of thing. So you might wanna give that a second thought. Like, I'll write the check for the first hundred. I think to get it going. Because I think there's a lot of people out there that would generously give to a project like this. I really do. And you might get some corporate support, too.
Right. So would you say the suggestion, then, when looking at fundraising, though, would be to wait and see what happens with other proposals and see whether we're approved? Or do the fundraising right away?
I'd start the fundraising right away, but I wouldn't wait. I mean-
Well, keep pressing forward and do your fundraising if you can. I understand what you're saying. I went through the school with you a few weeks ago. There's a lot of, these guys have done a lot, and there's a lot going out. But I look at this, and I don't know, maybe there's a big, maybe the chest of them, I always pick on them. But let's just say Cheston didn't wanna put a sign there, or, I don't know. There's so many different ways-
Right. I guess my-
Just keep that in mind, that maybe-
I guess my hard part with this and our discussion here-
Time to go do all that.
Well, I guess, and my hard part, too, is you put a thermometer outside the building, you gotta have a goal for people. And it's hard for me to know what the goal is if I don't know what the price is or the money is that I have to go for with this. So if I knew, if I knew-
Money if you don't know if it's gonna be past town.
Correct. Correct. So it's hard to tell people that and go out and get this stuff. Like, if, if I find out that, you know, oh, I like the project, but there's other projects, but you know what? A playground at 290,000, well, at least now I can tell people, or I know, you know, to people, oh, this is what I need to get to where we need to be. It's hard right now to do that for people. It's almost impossible to do that without knowing.
It's up to you and the people at the bag now. If you want to try fundraising, I feel like this project and the magnitude of it is a little out of, out of fundraising spec. It's a lot of money. And it's a one-time and 25-year expenditure. And because if it is funded through CPA, part of CPA is matching, we wanna call it grant money, whatever, it's a matching from the state. So it's not all coming out of the taxpayer pocket. You know, 30 to 40% has been matched by the state, and that's how we accumulate the money. And if I remember, we went through a long discussion of it. In addition to the money that's in recreation, there's a general amount of money that's kinda just sitting there, right? Am I saying that right? I don't have the numbers in front of me tonight.
That is the recreation money.
That was the rec, wasn't it?
Recreation is the main allocation. There's not a bucket for recreation. It's the general fund.
Oh, that's the general money. Okay, okay. And so each year, they put 10% in front, and then there's the general fund. Okay. So I think we should just support this. I don't know what else is coming down the pipe, but putting in an accessible play space out of school is, is an important thing. It finishes off the school and prepares it for the next 25 years.
Just a question. I think that for the, to the board, I think at this process, we should be approving it to send it to the next step, to the CPA committee. And at that point, they would look at what the available funds are and make their recommendation. But I think, I think on our vote, we vote to support it, to send it to the next step.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes, because if I just made, so similar to last year, it is town property, so the board has to approve anything that goes to CPA on town property. The school doesn't have the right to build a structure on town property without this board's approval. So you have to endorse it if it goes to CPC on anything on town property.
That makes sense.
So, so what you're saying, if we, if we sit here and say we're okay to send it to the next level, that's not good enough?
That is good.
No, that's what you have, you have to do that with any project.
That's what I was just saying, you know?
Yeah. No, I was saying, but that's any project that's gonna be on town property will have to come before this.
Right. The only thing that I wanna be cautious about, and I wanna be fair to everyone, and I'm 100% on board, so I'm very verbal about it, but I don't wanna have another CPC project come in here, and we haven't heard it, and we're not fair to them. I need to be fair to everybody, and hear everyone's. But I don't have a problem sending it to the next step. I have no problem. If someone wants to make a motion, to send it to the next step, I'm good with that.
So moved.
You want a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
So Jim, I'll send you a letter of support from the board to include in your packet.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Night.
The Grovan community the most.
Oh, 100%. 100%. Okay. All right. So-
Wanna just hang on?
We're gonna lose our audience?
No, don't worry about it.
I love the playground. Most of my hat is the playground.
Holy cow. You're missing the best part of the show.
Hey, you can stay.
Gary, where are you going?
Need someone to sit here. Mike needs company.
All right, so we're moving-
Good to see you back there.
Moving on, we have the endorsement of the final draft of the town's open space and recreation plan. And I see Rebecca there, so you must be the one that wants to talk to us all that.
Yes, Rebecca Oldham, Town Planner. So before you, this evening, we have the final draft of the open space and recreation plan. The goals and objectives and the five-year action plan that were presented to you back in September have not changed. They are the same. This just contains more of the supplemental information in terms of the history, culture, and all that other good stuff. The inventory of the parcels itself in its final form. I'm asking for the endorsement by the Board of Selectmen so that I can get a letter of support from the board and submit it to the state for its final approval.
Now you hear a motion?
I move that we, the board issue that letter of approval for-
Whatever she said.
The open space and recreation plan.
Open space and recreation plan.
Thank you.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, just, I wasn't able to stop in on the open session you had on. Was there anything of note or interest that you-
It was actually a really great event. We had over 20 people attend. We did a SOAR analysis, which is a strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results type of activity. So we got a lot of good feedback from the residents. I think that they really enjoyed the actual meeting itself, so I was actually really, really pleased with how it all turned out. And we got some really, really good feedback that was incorporated in the plan.
Perfect. Good job.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm all set.
Well, I guess we are gonna go to vote. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
Okay. So moving on, we have Town Manager continue discussion. We have the opinion from the council regarding Town Manager ballot question, and we have continued work on the job description. So I guess we'll start with the Town Manager. Council, sorry.
So I can summarize if you'd like. At the last meeting, I was asked to get an opinion from council regarding a binding ballot question. It is not allowed. He has outlined the reasons why. Unless there is a special legislation act or authorized by mass general law, it would be a non-binding ballot question. That goes for either the board putting a question on or a citizen's petition. Neither one could be a binding ballot question. So.
Okay. So that. So does anyone have anything on what Denise just said? Everyone good with that? Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I still think that it should go to the ballot. I was hoping for a binding ballot question, but if, if that's not, if that's not the case, it's not possible, and my research is the same. I think that, I think there should be a, get a feel for the townspeople. Before, before we bring it to a town meeting vote, bring it to a vote of the townspeople at the, see what their feelings are. And, and I know that fellow board members keep mentioning the fact that the survey that was done, but I, I, at the time, I voiced my concerns about that, because only one person in the family, the person that was getting the tax bill was able to fill it out. And as I said, husbands and wives think differently. And sometimes, if a husband doesn't think that it should be, the wife might think so, or vice versa. And there was no possible way for anybody to get a, an additional survey. There was only one per, per household. And I think that, I think everybody needs to be, needs to be heard. So a, a ballot question, just to get more people's view of how it should, how it should go down, that would be important. And, you know, in the last, in the last year, we'll be voting here on a contract for the fire chief. We're gonna be bringing a fire chief on board. We have a highway superintendent that we hired. And we should give these people a chance, they're taking over the department, to see, is there anything that they're going to need that may impact our taxes, that may have to be put into their budgets? Whether the fire department might need a couple of full-time people, whether they're a per diem people or not, they may have to include that in the, in their budget. So, and in addition to, we need to see what the impact is going to be on, on the school. And I know that's an override, it's something different, but it also goes, it does go on our taxes. So I think we need to slow this process down. And as the chairman had mentioned before, I think Wes Newberry took about a year and a half to, to bring this to, to a vote. And I think we're trying to rush things through. I'd like to see maybe a non-binding referendum at this upcoming town meeting here in, what, about five months? At the, not the town meeting, I'm sorry, wrong choice of words, at the, at the ballot. Final what they, and then maybe in a year, if everybody's on board with it, and we do a little bit more homework, we see what the impact of the taxes are gonna be, and then maybe we can move forward. But I think we're, we're trying to fast-track this, and I think we need to slow the process down.
Okay. Go ahead.
So just to clarify, so people watching at home, this process has actually been going on for quite a while. I was on a board back in 2013, a government advisory committee, where we looked at the structure of our town government. And we actually had on the, on the agenda, Town Manager versus Non-Town Manager. And the GAC committee was split equally down the middle as to whether or not that was the right time. But we turned our attention instead to the Board of Selectmen, expanding it to five members in order to give voters more say in how their town is run. And our feeling was that if we gave the voters more say in how their town was run, so they could have more representation, like each one of us represents a different aspect of the town. We're very different people. I think we've all found that in meetings. We have differing opinions, and that's a good thing, because it's reflective of our town. And this can, this has not been a rushed issue by any stretch. And I think that we should be careful in how we put forward to the voters how this is done. We have made significant changes in salary for the fire chief. We'll talk about that, I'm sure, later on the agenda, without going to the ballot, monetarily, without going to the ballot. We have eliminated positions in this town hall over the past few years, maybe to the point where it's a little bit stretched too thin, as far as the number of people here trying to get everything done. We've always been a, a pretty, pretty small government town. We have a very small amount of government that does an incredible amount of work. And the next logical step is to make sure that we have the ability to handle things on a more day-to-day basis as things happen. That's what this is about. The ballot question is a completely legal question. It cannot be a binding question. We did the ballot question, which was non-binding, at the same time that we went to the townspeople for town meeting, right? Didn't we? We did it about the same time.
We did-
A non-binding, right?
Yes, we did town meeting and then the ballot question.
Right. We did them both at the same time. Town meeting is one of the most informative places that I've ever attended, where people get to really ask questions and understand how their town is run and how their tax dollars is spent. So I'm a big proponent of a real healthy town meeting discussion on this. I'm also very supportive of having some open sessions, both with town departments, where they can speak freely about this, and with people in the town who wanna come down and, and weigh in on it. I'm open for that. But the ballot is really meant, designed for when our town needs to override Prop 2 and a half. That's what it's, that's how we operate. We vote our town meeting spending under Proposition 2 and 1/2. We decide how to cut up the pie under Proposition 2 and 1/2. And then, when we need to get more money raising, like building a new school, or something that's beyond the scope of the money available in Prop 2 and 1/2, then we go to the ballot. And I just don't want to confuse people at home who may be watching this, thinking that this is connected to a ballot. It's not. There's, there's not an override or an additional tax increase connected to this. It's just a reformation within our town government. And we would be eliminating some positions to do this, creating a position with a little more oversight, and building in the kind of positions that need to be here every day to keep things running. So I think the ballot question has been asked and answered at this point. I, I don't mind having a non-binding question at the same time that we go to town meeting, but I don't see any reason to delay everything over that. I really don't, because we have been working on this concept for years. It's been kicked around.
Okay. I'm gonna let anyone on the side of the table. I mean, go ahead, Bill.
Really, I have to agree with Selectman Castranellis, Selectwoman Castranellis, that this has been, I don't think anybody's fast-tracking this. This has been ongoing discussion for quite some time. And again, it just speaks to the natural evolution of the town, its growth, and what the taxpayers expect for service when they get here. It really, a simple question, back to Denise. When we hired the Town Planner, how mu, yes or no? I'll make it simple. Did we increase anyone's taxes when we hired the Town Planner?
No.
Did we increase anyone's taxes when we hired the new road commissioner?
No.
Did we increase anyone's taxes when we hired the new fire chief?
No.
Thank you. That's all.
Will we have to?
No.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
What Bill said. Can't say it any better than that.
Okay. I got a rebuttal.
Sure.
If we do, to Kathy's comment, if you do a vote at the town meeting, the town meeting, everybody knows, comes first. The town election comes afterwards. If you do a, what I'm looking for is more people, to get the people's opinion on how they want this done. And that's why I think the ballot question, if it's even a non-binding, that should come first, and then the town meeting vote in another year. Get the feelings of the townspeople this coming town election, and then we can move forward and do it, and do it in another year. If you do the town meeting vote first, that, if, so if there's only one person that votes, and you get a thousand people to vote against it, and it passes at the town meeting, it still passes. The townspeople need to weigh in on it the most, and it will show up at the ballot. And as I stated before, the, there's a lot of people that are unable to come to a town meeting because of age, because of maybe time. They need to go, they need to go to bed early, they don't stay up that late. They have transportation problems, some people don't drive at night anymore. And there is no provisions at a town meeting for an absentee ballot. You can get an absentee ballot for a town election. And they, so they don't have to be here. And I just want more people, the more people in town that can weigh in on this, the better. And I think that the ballot question should come first.
Okay. So from what I'm hearing on both sides, maybe what we should do is have a couple forums and have people come in to a couple forums as we go through this process, and they can come in and they can weigh in. And if you have a forum and you have a bunch of people coming in against it, you're gonna get a good feel. Either they're not gonna come in, they don't care. They're gonna come in against it, or they're gonna come in forward. So I think a couple forums would be fine.
And I guess, Ed, respectfully, and I mean sincerely, respectfully, I totally disagree with what you're saying. If it's a non-binding question, you definitely wanted to go to town meeting first so people can explore it. Maybe they don't want it. People at town meeting are more likely to vote this thing down, I think personally, than the ballot. They'll be more informed and they'll say, hear every day overseeing everything. I don't want my town to be run that way. That may very well be their opinion. I don't know. I'm not saying I know their opinion. I'm just saying I think it's timely to bring this forward and present it and show them, this is what we could have, this is what we have now, this is what we could have. What do you think?
Do you think that we owe the respect to the town people to have a couple meetings beforehand to see?
Absolutely.
If they're for this?
Yeah, I would want their input.
So what would be, as we go forward, if we, it seems like we argue every week about the same thing. But if we go forward, if we go forward, and we had a couple forums, of people coming in at one forum, and we're gonna kind of get a feel for, maybe have it on Saturday. If they come in and they're for it, or they're coming in, whatever, we can hear out what the people have to say.
Right.
Before we even get to the ballot.
Well, I think we need to have that job description, which is, that's what I keep coming back to. I think, I feel like bringing a well-thought-out job description and a hierarchy that could happen to a town meeting, it doesn't ensure it's gonna pass. It's not a slam dunk. It's just bringing it forward and letting people make a decision. They can't make a decision unless they're informed about it. And a town meeting would inform them. But we need to do forums as well, but we need a job description.
I agree, and I think we've got a job description.
That's what we gotta do now.
And we should have a forum for people to come in and they can talk about the job description as well. But that's all I'm saying.
That's a lot of forums.
Anyone else, have anything else they want to talk about that subject?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
I find it interesting that Selectman Watson wants to use a ballot question when it suits his particular interests. But when the town votes on something like marijuana usage, there was a overwhelming effort on his part to go and make it so the town would be ratified again to suspend that. You know, the town voted, I think, a couple times to approve medical marijuana or medical marijuana usage. And then there's overwhelming kind of focus from him and a couple other people that just wanted to rescind that, and the town said that they wanted it. We want, I don't like the way that this is going, I don't like the process, I don't like the town manager. I want to have the ballot, non-binding, of course, to say that I want to justify by a non-binding ballot question.
A rebuttal on that. On the, my colleague, he mentions the marijuana question. And the question that was brought to the voters on an election, it wasn't worded properly. It was worded, "Do you support marijuana?" If the ballot question had been written, "Do you support a marijuana grow facility or a dispensing facility in your town?" It would probably go down to a no vote. People were voting, yeah, they thought so, but not in my backyard. They voted it, but they weren't expecting it to come to their city and town. And it, and this has happened, this happened all over the state of Massachusetts because other cities and towns did the same thing. People voted for it at the ballot, but then when they go, wait a minute, we weren't expecting that to be in our town. So now they went back and they changed their vote. Because now it was, "Do you want it in your particular city or town?" And they decided, no, that wasn't what they, and it was because the ballot question was written incorrectly. It should have said, "In your town." And then there would have been a difference in the vote.
So moving forward with this, it seems like we've got two sides. We're not gonna come to a, some kind of an agreement here. But I don't see why, if we had a job description, why we couldn't turn around and have a forum on a Saturday and see what the people come into the forum say. It could be very overwhelming against it, it could be very overwhelming for it. I mean, that's gonna be our first findings, to see if the people want it or they don't want it. So if we can all agree to possibly have a forum, I mean, that's our first step. It doesn't go to the ballot, it doesn't go to a non-binding question, it doesn't go anywhere other than to have some people come in, let's hear what they got to say, and we'll judge it from there. But I agree, we definitely need to have a job description. We should have a dollar amount. I definitely think we should know, let those people come in to know, are we gonna need to get a, have an administrative assistant under the town manager? What's the layer of government gonna look like? I don't think we've even talked about any of this yet. That's what we really should be talking about.
I agree.
If we're gonna make government bigger, I don't think the people are gonna come in here in support of it. If we're gonna make the government the same, not gonna cost taxpayers money, I think they'll probably go for it, if it's gonna make their town run smoother. But until we get to that point in that discussion, I don't think we should talk about sending it to the ballot.
Well, you're right. And also, there's a good possibility, the Selectmen probably need an administrative assistant, which would be another part-time job. So you're gonna have a town manager, you're gonna need a, somebody in the treasurer's office, a treasurer collector, you might need a part-time job as a Selectman's administrative assistant. So you're adding people, you're adding bureaucracy. And at some point, at some point, it's gonna affect people's pocketbooks. Now, let's see what the impact of the schools and what these new people that we brought onboard are going to ask for in their budget to bring things, to bring things up to snuff before we even look at a town manager.
I have to say, you know, I gotta speak, Bill. This business of saying it's going to hit their pocketbooks is like telling a crying wolf, this town has never passed a general override. The only override they passed has been for a school and for trash ones, okay? We're a very conservative spending town. And there's no question in my mind that if we, as we've created different positions, like this fire chief and the highway superintendent, and we've had to pay more competitive salaries, we don't go to the ballot every time. We try to bring in people at a cost that we can afford. We look at the budget, we're being very frugal, and we're being very responsible. And this is by no means going to hit them in the pocketbook in that regard. Not this one position. Everything counts of cards, maybe if we went and started hiring all over the place. But what's happened since we introduced the position of a finance director is that we had supporting staff, and we've trimmed down to a point where now it's stretched a little thin, I believe. The financial director position would disappear. You understand that. That position would disappear with this. You would not have that. You would have a lesser position of a treasurer collector because by law, you have to have that position. We have some clerical staff already that may be fine for us to get by on for quite a while. I don't see the need to hire a tremendous amount of people because you take one position, that's a financial director. We've already included personnel into that position. So we're about two-thirds of the way to a town manager, honestly, without calling it that. And I gotta be honest with people, that's where we are. I don't know if people realize that, but we folded personnel into the financial director job years ago, and we did that without going to the ballot, and this is where we are. We're two-thirds of the way there.
I agree. And what better, what better way of putting it over to the town people is by showing them on a piece of paper?
Hierarchy.
You know what I mean? We show them on a piece of paper, and we say, "We're paying this right now for financial director." Boom, and the town manager's gonna be this. And then they can sit here in front of us, we can present it to them, and...
I dug out from years ago, the 2014 hierarchy, and then updated it for where we are now. I mean, you can see the difference in positions. I mean, we've been moving things around.
You wanna talk about your work on that?
It wasn't just myself, it was a really, really talented group of people. Betty Gorski was on with me, Lisa, Two Bay Carpenter, who was a former select person here. Dan McDonald was the chairman of it, Joe Demore, former Selectman, John Christopher, been involved in the town quite a bit. And our charge, I can't remember exactly how it was worded, but we're looking at expanding the Board of Selectmen and/or town manager. And we were just, within the committee, we were just completely divided in half. And we just felt that before this town should consider having a town manager, we wanted to make sure that the voters had a broad enough representation of oversight of that important position. So we did all vote to expand the Board of Selectmen to five. And that did go to the town meeting, and I think, was that a binding ballot question? It went to the ballot.
The?
The Board of Selectmen, it's elected positions, that was binding, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was binding because we're changing the number of elected positions. So, because the ballot isn't for everything. You can't just throw anything at the ballot. It's designed to raise taxes, not a popular thing, and change elected positions, either increasing them or decreasing them, are some of the primary purposes. And then, of course, what, bylaws or, no, bylaws or town meeting? The ballot's very specific.
Yeah, it was outlined in Bill Hewig's email. A few items that could go. I don't know if you need me to go over that again?
I don't know, does everyone want to hear that again? What Bill Hewig had to say, town attorney?
No, I read it.
Okay. You're good.
The point, the point is, is going from five-member to three to five, from a three-member Board of Selectmen to a five-member, doesn't really, we really isn't gonna change what we're talking about here, really, right?
No, but it means that, let's say you did go to a centralized type of government, where you have an administrator or a town manager. We discussed if it was only a three-member board, all it would take would be two members of that board, and whoever was town manager would be gone. And we felt that that would maybe end up with a town manager that would be leaning too much towards two members all the time. And we felt with five members, you'd have, you'd have to have that administrative position would be more accountable to a fuller breadth of opinion. You wouldn't, you couldn't just get along with two members of our board and stay onboard. You're gonna have to...
Right, I understand it.
And have a majority of the board supportive. And I feel like, especially this board, I mean, we're all of really different opinions. When we agree on something, it's meaningful because we represent such different points of view. And if the town did want to go to this kind of a managerial position, I think that it would be, we'd have good oversight on it. We would.
Okay. So moving on to the next part of it, would be the...
I gave you back your sheets, you saw, right?
The job description?
Yeah, I gave you back your sheets.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So have you given the other board members your, what you, your kind of like your layout that you did?
Did I? No, Denise, did I? Do you have it? I have it here.
I have this.
I think I have it. I don't know if I copied. I sent it to you, and did you try copying it?
Yeah, you didn't ask me to, I didn't know what it was for. I don't know if it was just to review or for the board, so I wouldn't have just made copies.
I'll copy it real quick, that's all right. So what I did was I took your tick marks, and I made them into this.
Okay, good. It's not, no.
I'd like to discuss your forum as well. Yeah.
You should start talking about that now. You should start talking about that now, so we're not just sitting here in silence.
That's true. Okay, we can. I just...
So just take two off the top of the pile. Take two pages off the top and a half, each person.
Well, Bill wanted to continue one part of it that I didn't let him, so he'd like to continue one part before we go to this. Go ahead.
With regards to the forum, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just have seen this play before. And I worry that if 15 people come in here, jump up and down and practice Law 101, that's where the law and logic doesn't play to your argument. So you scream real loud and slay me a fist on the table. Is that gonna change board members' perception of what the town manager's role and the creation of this should be? Where we're not hearing from the other 5,985 people in the town. I've witnessed it before, so I just, I wonder.
Me personally, if you've advertised and you've told the town people, "We're gonna have a forum, you invited them in here," it's their civic duty to come on in, listen to the forum. Maybe they couldn't make it that night, maybe we have two different forums. Give the other, for some reason, they couldn't make it that night, we give another forum, possibly. But the other, after a couple forums, I would think we could get a pretty good idea. Me personally, I wouldn't want to press forward if everyone's 99% against it. I don't think that it would pass at the ballot. Why, you know, that's just me, I mean...
Well, if 99% of 10 people are against it, what kind of sample size is that for us to make a judgment going forward on what the town would want? Well, that's what I'm afraid might happen in a forum. You're gonna get the people that are either really for it, really against it. There's not gonna be a lot of people. But I've seen it in the past where a very small minority of people who yell real loud can sway the opinion of some people.
Yeah. It's a good point. I think, I think the point of the forums, and I thought town council had suggested that we do such a thing, the point of the forum isn't to decide whether or not we're gonna give people a choice on this. I think we should be moving forward to putting it on the town meeting, but...
So why don't we just put it on the town meeting and forget all this other stuff?
No, because I think the point of the forum is to let them see what we're working off of and where we're heading with it.
I can't sit in town meeting and explain it to the people.
No, I think that's the point of the forum, is to more educate and inform than it is to engage in debate and dialogue.
I wouldn't have the forum and have the people come sit in front of me and say, "You 10 people, how many are against?" And then go home. That's my, that would be my whole thing, would be to educate them.
Right, so we could, we could start with the big sheet and present it and explain, this is what we did. We went through and we looked at all these duties and stuff, both in Groveland and in surrounding towns. And then now we're, at this meeting, I thought, now we're trying to work off of, I thought your idea, when you went through and made some marks on it, to list them under the duties and then decide, are these all the duties we want? We can add more, certainly, if you wish. We could call them different titles. I kind of, I took these titles from another town's one. I thought they were kind of nice titles, for administrative, financial, human resources, and legal. And then I also outlined, Ed, I don't know if you saw the second page, that yes, we'd have to have a treasurer collector. And we kind of are supposed to have more support staff in that area anyway. We've gotten, we've lost some staffing over the past couple of years here.
So now that you guys, we've just given this, do you guys want to take this tonight and review it and possibly talk about it next meeting? Or you want to talk, continue to talk about this tonight?
It would be nice, 'cause I kind of marked up, you know, my own thing. So now I'd like to put it against hers and eliminate any redundancies and come up with a more, more comprehensive... I guess the difficulty becomes, and how do we communicate this to each other without breaking open meeting law rules?
This is it. You have to do it right here in a public meeting.
So whatever we propose, we really, we all need kind of a little time to digest it because we can't talk amongst each other in between meetings. because we can't talk amongst each other in between meetings.
Right, so this is all now one big sheet. My only concern was I felt like the Excel sheet that I was pulling off of didn't have all these pages. Did you notice that when I sent it back to you? I could talk to Denise. What I tried to do, Bill, is I took this sheet, this is Excel, and I made these sheets...
Yeah, the big one. I just made it in a smaller piece.
And then I made these sheets as different sheets behind it. So it's all one thing.
Yeah, I kinda did the same thing. Took it, kinda mocked it up, and then took some of the other examples and...
You know what I mean, like you click and you start a new sheet, so it's all in one file. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yep, you just have the different tabs at the bottom.
Right, but does my first sheet have all of these pages? Okay, just make sure I have the right front sheet. That's all I was a little worried about.
There's sixty-one lines of data on the first tab. So the last one is, makes recommendations for appointment, excuse me, and removal of relevant positions and membership on committee is your last item on there.
That's what I have.
Yeah, and that's what I have here too.
So then it's all on the spreadsheet.
Okay, so it is, okay, for some reason, I must've been getting tired. I'm looking at it going, "Is this the right sheet?" So this is all in one file. We could send it out and everybody could, you know, you could use a different color ink or highlight where you wanna change, or what you like or don't like.
Well, they all have the original that was sent out after the last meeting.
Sent out a couple of times.
Yes.
But they don't have these sub-pages.
They don't have the sub-pages, correct.
So we could, you could send this, the one I sent you has this and the sub-pages. Yes, right, okay. So that's all this is, I, this is not the new, it's off, it's on this file, just behind it.
Right. You did the same thing, you kinda picked out from that list.
Well, I went through his marks, that's why I took his papers away.
I just went through and I took this, and I said, "Administrated or manager." I went through this sheet.
I did the same thing.
Right, and that's all I did. And that's what I was gonna do. I was prepared to talk about, okay, we'll start at one. Do we think that should be a manager, or do we think it should be assistant? And then go to two, three, four. I was just gonna go down the list. But then it was talked about taking this back and then adding more duties or whatever.
Yeah, or it's taking out some things.
However you wanna go about it.
So whatever you guys wanna do.
Let's simplify it to the point where we can just take a piece of paper. It's all on there, we agree this is what we're gonna work off of, and we start by going down and saying, "What position would this be?" That's all.
Right, and some of these might, they might be slightly redundant. You might wanna consolidate some of these, you know?
For the next meeting, these guys just got this.
Yeah.
But for the next meeting, could we get this format for the next meeting? With what you've done, if that's what you think is good. This next, and then we could sit there and then we can go from one down the line and plug them into wherever you want.
Well, we have this, this is all in one file. So what do you, do you want, I sent you the file, do you want me to just send it to everybody? Can I do that?
I can send it to everybody.
Okay.
Does everyone know what they're doing with that? 'Cause I don't know what you just said.
Okay, ready? All I'm saying is, it's the only one.
I don't know what you want them to do with the files.
You gotta, you gotta, you take this thing here and you spread it out onto a spreadsheet, so it's not all in two different pages. And we'll just sit at the...
The two different pages are, one is your column and one is Kathy's column. So you wanna take everyone's column on one spreadsheet.
I guess we need to agree to what one we're gonna go with, Kathy's or Bill's. I don't care. I'm just saying, did Kathy, I thought Kathy took some of Bill's and some of Kathy's and come up with her own little sheet.
No, all I did was separate the treasure collector duties.
Kathy only has three lines on her spreadsheet.
Okay.
So there's really not much on Kathy's.
We have to have a treasure collector by law, so that was the one I... This is, this is pretty much what you had.
Okay.
Chipped off, I think, mostly.
So we'll go back one step. Can we, does everyone agree in the next meeting, if we had this sheet that was in front of me that I marked up originally, to bring this sheet with us and we can sit and talk about this the next meeting, go down through each item and discuss where we'd want it to go? Manager or assistant manager?
Why can't we do half of that now?
Whatever you wanna do.
Well, we keep pushing it off. I'd rather get something done.
I just thought you guys might want time to read it.
I'd rather just get a copy of that and start talking about it and get something done. Because this gets kicked back and kicked back and kicked back.
I didn't see the need to do an assistant manager, just a treasure collector.
I'm not saying assistant. I put assistant, I didn't say manager. I, it could be an administrative assistant. I don't know what that position would be. If you guys come and say, "Hey, I want the Town Manager to do every single one of these, mark them all in blue and move on." That's, I just looked at it, that, I don't think a Town Manager should be overseeing and coordinate their all activities related to the town meetings. I mean, that would be something, I would think, that could be someone under them. Research and write town meeting warrants, maybe someone under that. I mean, this is what we need to discuss.
Those are generally Town Manager duties.
So that's, I took your list, Bill, and I put it under administrative duties, financial duties.
Well, this is what, this was my stab at it. If you guys wanna take each one of these things and go down through them, we can take a stab at it again. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong.
That's what, that's what this is, Bill. This is your stab, right here.
Okay.
I just put it into it, whether it's an administrative or financial duty.
Perfect, so do you want me to throw this one over here? And Mike just said, "Let's get going." I'll pull this one right out here and someone can start. I'm on the Town Manager duties as selected by Bill Dunn. Is everyone on that piece of paper? Okay, let's go down. Someone wanna start?
Oversees and coordinates all activities related to town meetings. Yep.
So you're gonna use the Bill Dunn sheet, not the all? I just wanna make sure I have the right one. You're taking the whole comparison or just the ones that Bill likes and identified?
I think this one's a good one to work, we can add to this easily. You checked almost mostly important stuff, Bill. I didn't see anything left out that was too important.
What sheet you guys wanna use?
I thought we were using this one here.
Okay, so let's go. We have, so administrative, she just read. Oversees and coordinates all activities related to Town Manager.
Town meetings.
Meetings, sorry. So who do you want to do that, who do you want to do that?
The Town Manager.
So, someone, we can write Town Manager in that spot.
Well, that's what it is.
I think that's what it is.
Yep.
So you could consolidate like those first two boxes into one, probably.
Second one, research and writes the town meeting warrant. Town Manager. Everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Prepare all documents associated with the, with the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager.
Yep.
Maintains the calendar for the use of the town buildings.
That seems to be something that could be delegated to somebody with less of a, less than the Town Manager. That's, that's, that and the next one are more coordinate with Recreation Committee and In-Town Sports Groups for the Use of Town Fields. That, that's almost like a clerical position. So you're gonna be paying the Town Manager to be doing these mundane tasks like this.
That's what I had down here, I had put in green for, I put assistant, but I probably should've said somebody.
We have cler, some help that's clerical now as it is. It could go, it could be delegated, but I don't wanna create another position for these. These are not huge amounts of time. The calendar for the Use of Town Buildings doesn't take that much time to do, one way or the other, whoever does it.
Calendar, wouldn't that be some of the, all the sports fields? And delegating out who uses the fields and on and on and on.
Yeah, that's, that could be quite extensive.
And also, every, every meeting that takes, takes in this town, that's...
Well, right now, our Financial Director does that, and we pay her a lot.
I think she does a lot that she shouldn't be doing, in my opinion. I think that she's over, we give her a lot, and I think we keep expecting more and more. I don't think it's right. That's why I took my time to separate all this.
Okay, well, I guess...
I'm only one of five, so you guys go ahead and make a decision what you wanna do with those categories.
I would send that to somebody with a lower level of responsibility. That's not something that you need a Town Manager to be doing.
Mike, what was your decision on that one? And Bill?
That's item number four.
One, two, three, four.
He's talking about three and four.
Four, I agree with. I don't think it belongs in a Town Manager's role. I think it's just...
So that's the one with coordinate recreation.
Maintains calendar for use of town building.
So can we put a checkmark next to that one, everyone, so we can discuss that further?
But for the recreation?
Maintains the calendar use of town building. I think it's, is there an agreement we should put a checkmark in? Okay.
And the one below it.
And the one below it. Okay, checkmark that, okay, moving on. Maintains the Board of Selectmen pages of the town website, In-Town, Facebook. I personally, I had checked off the sheet saying someone with lesser qualifications could take care of that. That was just me.
But we don't have that position, Bill. We've gotten rid of most of those positions.
But the point that we're trying to do is we're trying to talk about Town Manager duties and we're putting checkmarks. If we agree that that's a lesser duty, then we'll have to figure this out down the road.
Okay.
Does everyone agree with that to checkmark that one or not? Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Item number...
Maintains the Board of Selectmen pages on town website, In-Town, Facebook. So it's either gonna be not by the Town Manager but possibly somebody else. The duty, we take...
Yeah, it should go somewhere else.
Ed? Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy.
Well, except for, I believe the Town Manager should have oversight over all communications that are coming out of the town. You can't just like hand that off. There would have to be oversight of that.
I think the Town Manager's gonna have oversight of whoever works in this town hall when we're all sitting down, I would think.
Right, the Town Manager is typically the spokesperson on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the town, so is responsible for...
Okay, we're gonna, we have a checkmark next to those, we're gonna discuss them further. Okay, maintains the town website and town Facebook. We'll just discuss, we're gonna checkmark that, right?
It's the same thing, isn't it?
Right, so moving on. Supervises town departments appointed by the Board of Selectmen and directs day-to-day affairs of the town. We'll start with Kathy. Manager or not?
Manager.
Ed, manager or not?
Yes.
I say yes, Bill?
It's a definition of a manager.
Okay, and Mike? Okay, moving on. Foster and promote effective working relationships with the departments and boards and committees. Start with Kathy again. Manager or not?
Yes.
Ed, manager or not?
Yes, but maybe move to part of humans, human resources.
Are you gonna move it over a column?
To, to human resources.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I, I would agree, probably human resources, so we should checkmark that. I'm gonna say me.
I just moved it over, I'll move it.
Checkmark it, and Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll checkmark on that, okay.
Well, we're just moving it over to this column, right? We're not saying it's not management. Am I right?
I'm putting a checkmark because we're gonna move it someplace in a, in a further discussion later on.
Oh, okay, 'cause I just said move it over to a column.
Well, I think, okay, moving on. Provides administrative direction to the townspeople, department heads, and staff. Mike, manager or not?
Manager.
Bill, manager or not?
Manager.
Me, manager. Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so that gets... Serves as a Public Relations and Communication Officer of the town. Kathy, manager or not?
Manager.
Ed, manager or not?
Yes.
I say yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Okay. Responsibility for the oversight and maintenance of the town buildings. Starting with Mike this time. Manager or not?
Manager.
Bill?
Yes.
I say no. Ed?
I think that could be somebody at a different level of responsibility.
And Kathy?
Yes, at this time, 'cause we don't really have like a DPW.
Okay, so basically, I would say, don't checkmark it because it was the majority of the board to say it should stay where it is, more or less by the manager. Keep the Board of, Board of Selectmen fully informed in regarding all departmental operations, financial affairs, general problems, and administrative actions, and submits periodic to report to the Board of Selectmen. Starting with you again, Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Yeah, I guess that would fall under that.
And I agree. Ed?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Attends the Board of Select meetings and advises on policies and agenda and items and procedural matters. Kathy, manager or not?
Manager.
Ed, manager or not?
Could be, could not be. If it was broken up, I don't think the manager needs to attend all meetings. Yeah, you could, you could put that under manager, I suppose.
I say manager, Bill?
Oh, yes.
And Mike?
Yes, man.
Okay. Interview and oversees interview process of all employees and board members appointed by the BOS. Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Yes.
Me, interview and oversee, interview... I would say manager. What'd I put over there? Hold on, interview, I forget where I... Yeah, manager. Ed?
Yeah, yeah, yes, I would say definitely.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. May appoint and remove department heads and other employees of which no method of selection is provided by law. Such appointment and removal shall be effective fifteen days from the date of the written notice unless BOS votes to subject, reject such action. Starting with Mike this time.
Manager.
Bill?
I don't know about that one. I don't know if it's too much, too much authority.
We didn't get to that choice. We got manager or not.
Well, you can check it and discuss it.
We didn't have too much authority or not. That's another wrinkle.
Come on, well, I went off...
Check it, Ed.
Going off the book a hundred checks.
Okay, all right, I say check it. Ed?
You know, based upon reading the, the job descriptions of the other city, of the other towns, that would be one of their duties of the manager, I think.
Okay, and Kathy?
Manager.
So we had, say it again, Mike, you said check it?
Well, you gave me two choices. I gave you one of those choices, and then Bill threw another choice in there, so...
Yeah, like the two I had.
We can do manager dash check if you'd like, and that will...
Okay, well, I checked it. I'm just trying to see how many checks we got to talk about later. Bill, was it checked or not?
No, yeah, what does a check mean? I don't know.
Check means we're gonna discuss something more later on.
I would check it.
Okay, so it's gonna get discussed later on, okay. Makes recommendations for appointment and removal of relevant, relevant...
Relevant.
Relev...
Relevant.[1536.72]
Did you spell it wrong?
Relevant.
Um, appointment and removal of relevant positions and membership on the committees. Starting with Kathy?
Management.
Ed?
Uh, I'm not sure. No, I think we could discuss that.
Hey, I say discuss it. Bill?
Uh, same, ditto, discuss it.
Okay, and Mike?
Check it.
Okay, so it's check. Okay. Um, where are we going from here? We going to?
Financial responsibilities.
All right, so, I don't know, okay, no back page. Okay, financial, uh, responsibilities to see what the budget is administered, um, administered, administered as adopted by the town meeting. Starting with Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Yes.
I say yes. Ed?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Works jointly with the financial staff on maintenance of the buildings. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Um, discuss it.
I say discuss it. Bill?
Yeah, it's a manager.
Okay, and Mike?
Um, discuss it.
Okay, it stays. Supervises treasurer and.
What was the, what was the decision on that?
It was three to discuss it.
Okay, it's gonna be check. Um, supervise treasurer and collector, assistant collector and town accountant. Starting with, I don't know where you started last thing, so, Mike?
May I comment on that before you? So that wouldn't be a town manager seeing just the three financial positions?
What's that again?
It'd be the whole financial department.
Well, it would be all employees.
Right, so do we need?
You're limiting.
Managers.
Yeah.
So we don't need that. That would just be a finance director that oversees, as a town manager, you wouldn't have just those three positions being overseen by the town manager.
That's really covered under. Provides administrative direction to department heads and staff.
So you could remove that, 'cause you covered it.
What now?
We can remove it.
Should we remove that, 'cause it really falls under number eight, supervises all town departments.
Right, 'cause this one you're limiting just who they supervise.
I just lost my place.
So, we should take this one out because it's, it's redundant to number eight.
Supervise treasurer, collector, gone, okay. Develop and keep an annual update, um, complete inventory of town property in real and personal. Um, starting with Kathy?
Yes.
So yes for the town manager?
Yes.
Ed?
Um, uh, discuss that.
Okay, I say discuss it, Bill?
Yes.
Yes to discuss it or yes to put it in?
Manager.
Oh, man.
So it's either a manager or discuss it?
Class was easier than this.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to make it as easy I can, at least we're moving a little bit.
I say it's manager.
Okay, and Mike?
Manager.
Okay, so it passes. So, to write a grant proposal for the town to ensure compliance with the terms and grants. Starting with Kathy?
Yes, manager.
Ed?
Uh, yes.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay?
Manager.
Yep, responsibilities to file or oversee the filing of grant applications and inform the body, the Board of Selectmen to the status of applications, starting with Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Yes, manager.
I say yes. Ed?
Uh, yes, but I think you could combine that with the one above it by just, uh, adding and inform the Board of Selectmen of the status of applications.
Okay, and Kathy?
Yes.
So it passes. Um, to review and overs- to review and oversee the management of the town trust funds.
May I comment on that?
Yep.
That's the fiduciary responsibility of the town treasurer, your town manager can do that.
Let me take that off.
Okay. To act, cross it out.
Well, I could put it on the next sheet, wait, I'm gonna write it over here.
To act as the chief procurement officer for the town. Starting with Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Reports to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Board on financial matters affecting the town. Starting with Mike?
Um, manager.
Bill?
Yes, manager.
Manager, Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Approves warrants for payment of town funds in compliance with the policies set by the Board of Selectmen. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, Ed?
Uh, I just wonder if that doesn't fall under treasurer collective responsibility.
No, that would be the warrants that you all sign here. You could designate the town manager to handle signing of the warrants.
Okay.
Ed?
Uh, yes, then, then, y- yes.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Manager.
Coordinate and manage all financial information received from the Board of Assessors. Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Manager.
Manager, Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Make detailed, um, estimates for all money necessary to maintain improper operation of government. Kathy?
Yes.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Recommend salaries and pay rates to the town employees accepting, um, collective bargaining. Mike?
Manager.
Bill?
Manager.
Manager? Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Can I, is that supposed to be accept collective bargaining?
Accepting collective bargaining.
It should be accept collective.
Except, so you're excluding the collective bargaining?
So I take the ing off of that.
Or are you having this person conduct the collective bargaining?
I didn't, that wasn't a check thing, was it?
Uh.
No, yes, it's in there somewhere else.
Okay, it's in there somewhere else?
Yeah, collective bargaining, I think it's in there somewhere else.
Okay. So this is except.
So it's town manager anyway.
Yeah, you have a check, I hope I didn't miss that.
Um, it's, okay.
Oh, yes, right here.
Supervises the, uh, utilization of the central, um, computerized financial and management information. Um, starting with Mike again?
There's management right in it, manager.
Bill?
Yeah.
Me, yeah, Ed?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Report to the Board of Selectmen on all financial matters concerning town government. I thought we already saw that one.
We already have that some.
Cross that one out again.
Redundant.
It is redundant.
Cross that one out. Okay, human resources. Acts on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and personnel duties and laws, starting with Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Yes? Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Administered collective bargaining agreements on town personnel plan, personnel plan. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Me, yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Well.
Manager.
So are you just having them administer, or are you having them conduct?
Well, below they oversee.
But they still don't conduct collective bargaining? Are you having them just administer the union contracts? Are you having them actually conduct?
It should be negotiate.
Yes, so you're having them.
I think the wording of this is kinda like a one-night type thing, we could probably tighten up the wording, but I think we're all in agreement that that person would do the duties of.
Yeah.
So maybe we should take out a ministers and just put collective bargaining agreements in the town professional plan, so take out a ministers.
And replace with negotiates.
Okay, negotiates, okay, negotiate, no-go-gee-eight. Okay, stick our argument, we get that taken care of now.
Okay.
Matters and reviews, personal law, changes, policies, job classifications, and salary structures. Starting with Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes, manager.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Maintains personal records, employees' files, personnel listings, leave of attendance, and reports on other related forms. Mike?
Part of that could be either one.
It's A or, it's either check or no check.
I know, but it means you could break that up.
Which, I know, I agree with you, so we can talk about it later.
I'll give you a half.
Check it off, we'll talk about it later. Bill?
Check.
Check, I say check, go ahead, Ed.
Yes, check it.
And Kathy?
Yes, we're checking it?
No, we're asking you what you wanna do, either manager or check it, for more conversation.
They wanna have more discussion on it.
Well, I think it just combines with the one below it, the manager would have to oversee the personnel system, so I think.
Overseas personnel systems and staff, including personnel evaluation policies, um, practices, employee benefits, programs, enforced labor, contracts, labor relations, collective bargaining in state and federal laws, other related. Kathy?
I say yes, it kinda takes care of the one above it already.
Yes.
So you want the town manager?
I think that's managers' duty.
Okay. I say check it, go ahead, Bill?
Uh, I, I think most of it is found in, in the other two columns we discussed, but I, I think it belongs somewhere in there, so, yes?
Yes for ti- town manager, or yes to discuss it further?
Yes, discuss it further.
Okay, check, okay, Mike?
I say manager.
So it passes, am I correct when I say that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm gonna take out my little check mark because it passes. Okay, next column, boy, Mike, we, we did more than half, well, you should be happy.
I am happy.
All right. Oversees and administers all license permits under, um, jurisdiction of the town selectmen, starting with Mike, 'cause he's happy.
Um, no.
Check. Check.
I don't think it's manager, so.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I go along with Mike.
I say check two, and Mike and Bill, I mean, Jesus, Ed?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think it's part of the, um, managers' duties.
Okay, and Kathy?
I think it's manager duty.
So it's three to one to pa- uh, should be checked, okay?
It's a check.
Uh, coordinate with legal counsel on legal matters, starting with Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes, that.
I say yes.
Yes.
And Mike?
Kathy, Mike says manager, yes.
All right, with approval of BOS, prosecute and defend or compromise all litigation in which the town is in party, is in a party. Starting with Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Um, yes.
I say yes, Bill?
Yes.
And Mike?
Manager.
Coordinate with DOR and maintains, uh, proficiency, I think, proficiency in municipal finance laws, starting with Mike, I guess.
Manager.
Bill?
Yes, same.
Manager and?
Uh, manager.
And Kathy?
Manager.
All right, to act a chief compliance officer with, in regards to state ethics and open meeting law. Kathy?
Yes.
Manager, Ed?
Uh, yes, manager, but I think it should be, um, worded differently.
Okay, and I say manager, and Bill?
Check.
And, check it, you wanna talk about more?
Yep.
And Mike?
Manager.
Okay, so, where do we end up?
It was three for manager.
Free for managers or passes, okay? All right, now, do we need to do something with this back page?
I don't tell you finish this page, I would suggest, I mean, you're gonna have to have a treasurer collector position, if you get rid of the financial director, the financial director right now is the financial director.
Are we done with this page?
Treasurer collector.
Are we done with it?
Yes, done with it.
Okay, so, I don't understand.
So.
I don't either.
Well, we checked a bunch of stuff for more discussion later, don't you wanna?
So can we talk about that next week?
Okay.
Do you wanna go about, go?
So I can send out, I color-coded it, so I can send out the chart to everybody, so that in case you, I don't know if everyone had the checks and.
My checks are here. My checks are here, but I mean, I think next meeting we should just talk about these check marks.
I'm serious, 'cause I can't see a lot of those colors.
I used yellow for town manager and blue.
Our checks are here, we could see if the, uh, uh, finance director correct, checks the right boxes.
Do that, too.
Okay, so, are we in agreement, we're gonna take these check marks and we're gonna talk about these check marks next meeting?
Yes.
Okay? Are you guys in, okay? So.
Yes.
Now whoever runs the meeting, I mean, whoever does the paperwork for the meeting, all we need to see next week is these check marks on a piece of paper listed down, so we can discuss them.
How many are there?
Well.
There is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Take your shoes off.
Ten check marks. Take them off, do it again. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that's what I checked off. You wanna check, y'all check marks, go right ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, I, I, I trust your checks.
Okay.
So you're saying that's when the next meeting will, will this go?
We'll take these ten and we'll talk about them.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we good with that? Did he say you're good with that?
I'm not near, so you can do whatever you want at the next meeting.
Possibly anything that we might've forgot.
Would you do me a favor, just take these ten and just send them off, or you rather, I'll do, I'll get, I'll get it done? I don't know if I could be sending them off to the.
Nope.
Send it to Caitlin.
Well, she did, she color-coded it.
I understand, I'm just asking her if she can just send them to the.
Yes, I will do that.
Four, five board members, I have mine, I'm not gonna get rid of them. Okay, thank you. Okay. So, we're taking care of that, we're moving on.
Moving on.
Okay, we have an update, um, on the cable contract renewal, if any. So I will speak on behalf of this because I did speak with, um, Rob Cabone, I hope I said it the right way. I did have a conversation with him, and I asked him how things are going, and he told me that they had a very good meeting. I know Ed's here, and I know, um, Tracy's over there. They had a very good meeting, it was productive, and Rob is going to start filing for an extension. Um, the meeting went well, they discussed, I won't get into what they discussed, but they discussed, and it was a productive meeting. So, next meeting, we will probably have them in to talk to us further. I was gonna give them time to get their paperwork filed, and they needed a little more time to come into our next meeting, they're gonna have some work for us.
And I thought it was encouraging when I heard from Rob that, uh, i- it's not, it's not something that's out of the ordinary to a- ask for an extension, and if I, my notes were correct, it was three to, three to six months would be a, uh, a timeframe. And he, he said it wasn't a, a position of weakness that you file for, and he says it's, it's not unusual. And we had asked him to, uh, look into it and to start the paperwork.
Okay, anyone else have anything else on this subject?
Um, yeah, I think, I would, um, encourage the cable committee to look at, um, other area cable contracts, like West Newbury, um, has a contract that goes to, I think, twenty twenty-six. They have a little bit different, um, provision in there as far as the payment, cable access, it's, um, it's a percentage of gross revenue, as opposed to a flat amount, which I thought might be good, 'cause it ties into however much money they're making in the town. Um, so that was interesting, I, I, and they also had a, um, clause in there, Ed, you might be interested in that, that allowed for another company to come in.
Uh, there is provision in the, in the old contract for another company to come in.
This was stated more, more upfront, I thought, but maybe it's similar.
Based on your conversation, what can we expect in two weeks from the Cable Advisory Board?
I expect that they are going to be able to tell me if they were able to get an extension or how the process for the extension was, and I expect that they are going to have their minutes to their meeting done, which weren't done, and they're gonna turn around and have an update for us of that meeting. Any other questions?
Those are the expectations for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Here in two weeks.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Okay, so moving on. We have the ratification of the fire chief contract, if finalized.
Let me just summarize what we agreed to.
Sure.
So, um, today, we agreed to a contract, um, with Chief Robert Valentine, um, that will commence on December first. I'll go through just the, the details of the specs of it. Um, we'll start at a, at a sum salary of seventy-five thousand dollars, and then upon, um, rece- receipt of his Mass Fire Chief credentials and Mass EMT certification, we'll check in with him at the three-month mark. If he has those certifications, his salary will increase to seventy-seven thousand. If not, we will check back in at the six-month mark to make sure those credentials are intact. Um, and in addition to that, um, Chief Valentine is going to continue his education and is elected to go for a bachelor's degree in, is it emergency management?
Emergency management.
In emergency management, we support him in this endeavor, and he will be taking, I believe, two, two courses per semester to achieve a, um, bachelor's degree in emergency management. And upon receipt of that, he will receive another increase in his pay of about three thousand dollars, I believe is what we agreed to.
But the town will not hold any expense to get the bachelor's degree?
Correct, he's, he's paying for this on his own, he had taken classes before, and he's now rolling it into a, an accelerated program, and he's confident that he will be able to complete that.
Right.
So.
And his appointment will be December first, so that our interim chief, there won't be an overlap of the interim chief. And also, there was one other thing that we talked about was, um, you said it, I just thought I made.
The two courses per semester?
Yeah. Yeah, it, we gave him a three-month window.
We gave him a three-month to check in on his certifications as a Mass Fire Chief and a Mass EMT?
Right.
And then if it's not certified, then we'll check back with him at six months.
Right, if six months it hasn't met the benchmarks, then we'll be sitting down and having a candid conversation.
Yep.
Okay, so, is anyone good with that? Go ahead, Bill?
No, I'd like to, um, ask the chairman to place it on the agenda today, five months out, so that we do not miss this six-month probationary period. I'd like the chairman to put it on the calendar now, so that.
For the three months and the six months?
Sure. Sure.
At very minimum, six, so that we don't go over the probationary period without realizing it by accident.
No, but he has a benchmark, he needs to meet at three first, we should meet the, we should go on for the.
That's fine, I'm willing to, but I wanna make sure that six-month is, is.
I definitely think for three months.
We have that meeting before the six-month is up, so that we can.
I say the three, then the six.
Fine, I'm, I don't have it wrong.
All right, thank you.
I'd, I'd just like to, maybe, uh, maybe we could get it on the agenda, get him on the agenda for our first meeting in December, introduce him to the townspeople.
Sure.
Well, I was just gonna, I didn't know if Kathy was done going through the contract, we should mention a few more items, so, because you have to vote on it in the public setting.
Oh, okay, so, which items, I've thought that, I mean, the vacation, leave, sick leave, personal leave is all similar to our other contracts with our police chief?
Well, no, I mean, so I would say, um, there's no additional increases other than the benchmarking until July first, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yes, yes.
Um, there's no vacation time to be accrued or used during his probationary period.
Right.
The sick leave follows the personnel policy, the personal leave, the bereavement leave, holidays follow the same, um, he would be entitled to twelve hundred dollars for clothing and equipment allowance. And I think those, and he's expected to be in the office a minimum of forty hours per week, uh, or expected to work a minimum of forty hours per week, and he is, um, expected to designate more time in the office than out of the office, I think with a big, and he must reside within thirty minutes.
And he is going to relocate to our area, because he must be within thirty minutes of our town, so he's planning to move up in rent and then find a place to live permanently.
So, someone will need to make a motion to ratify this publicly?
So move.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so, moving on, we now have finance director's time.
Um, just a couple of quick things, um, and I know I'm probably gonna steal Bill's thunder on this, but I am going to say some thank yous for Pumpkin Fest, um, our Pumpkin Fest was last Wednesday, the twenty-third, it was a huge success, we had the largest crowd we've had to date. It was a beautiful night weather-wise, everyone there seemed to have a really good time, um, I wanna thank Heavenly Donuts and Inglesby Farm for their donations of food, um, obviously Selectman Dunn, um, his wife Teresa and their family, a special thanks to Patrick for riding one of the tractors, uh, thank you to Selectman Watson for his tractor rides, um, Chief Gillen and the entire police department, interim chief Santa Paula and the entire fire department, um, Darcy Lapoy, the library director, and all the library employees, um, and Steve, our facilities coordinator. Everyone worked very hard to accomplish this event, and worked very hard the night of, um, like I said, it was a very big success, um, and I wanna give a very special thank you to Deb Stewart, who every year very generously donates her time and money to see that this event takes place.
Okay, the only thing I'll add to that is I would like to say thank you to the pumpkin coppers that brought their pumpkins, and any of the volunteers that came that night and helped out, I know there was a few other people that stopped by, um, so, yeah.
Okay.
No, I had to get my two cents in, like you said.
Um, our message board out front is not working, so, if anyone's expecting messages, don't expect them anytime soon. Um, I had a call with the company today, the message board is approximately thirteen years old, we've replaced the computer, we've replaced the software, it's still not working, he's gonna try and come out and see what he can do, um, so, I'll update you on that.
I have a question on that message board, I really dislike the red.
Seventeen thousand dollars to replace a new multicolor for our size.
No town around us is a red light.
I, he quoted it for me today, seventeen thousand dollars.
I can't say it out loud even.
I think we can go with what we have.
So, he's gonna try and fix what we have.
Go with the red light.
Good.
It's just, it's harsh, it's harsh on the eyes, and it's hard to, hard to, to read, I mean, it's just not a good sign, sorry, that.
So.
Spent so much on it, but it's, it's almost a waste of money.
You wanna write the check, we'll cash it. Just asking.
Just saying, you spent it on a sign that no town around us has a sign that's that difficult to read.
Well, I would say we were the only town that had a sign for quite some time, uh, West Newbury just got one in, um, Haverhill just put one at the stadium recently, so, our sign has been here much longer than other towns, so.
And it's red.
Well, it is, um.
Yes.
So, the playground at the pines, they finished pouring the, um, poured-in-place rubber today, um, it should be ready to go by Friday, if we have any sun during the day, if not, it'll probably be next Monday, um, the caution tape will stay around it, um, until it can fully cure, so, but that is ready to go, um, as soon as the stops raining for a little bit. I am out of the office as of Monday, I am here next Monday, and then I will be out of the office for several weeks.
I'm wishing you the best.
So.
Have fun in Aruba.
Yeah. If only.
Um, okay, you all set? Okay, so, moving on, um, we go to Selectman Times and Report, start with Mike.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I have is trying to schedule the meeting with Senator Tar's office for Washington Street and the Valley Screw Building, ten to leave, that's scheduled for November eighth in the afternoon in Wilmington at that same location, Bill, that we met and met last time.
Okay.
Um, as soon as I get confirmation from that, I'll let you know, but, uh, that should be coming down, and I think they have a, I think they said they have a lawyer assigned to that project now, so, we should be back on to moving that.
Okay?
That's it, Bill?
I've got a few things, so indulge me, uh, first, a, as far as reports, we did have a meeting of the building committee on Tuesday, uh, the forty percent reconciliation process took place between the architect and the builder, the numbers, it, while reconciling back to the original price of, uh, one hundred and eighteen million, uh, were somewhat off, and that's, uh, going to be discussed at a November sixth meeting, where we have a value engineering discussion at the architect's office, which I shall be in attendance, and have more information on that at the next meeting. The rec committee was also met on that night, I was late, obviously, because I have a hundred and eighteen million reasons to be at the other meeting first, um, I got there late, but they have, they do have some plans and some ideas for the pines, uh, recreation area, that, um, they're kind of mulling through and, and working with through right now, so, when the proper time is, I'll discuss those. I do want to ask about the pines bathrooms, now that winter is coming, is there a plan and a time date to winterize those bathrooms? Okay, um.
I'm sure there is, it sort of, I don't know, Rennie took over the, uh, maintenance with the bathrooms and the pumps and stuff, I'm not really sure.
Okay, we need to talk to Rennie, because as I look at the forecast, we're seeing numbers that are now dropping into the lower thirties, the last thing I wanna see happen is pipes burst over there, and we have a skating rink instead of a bathroom, so, I think that should be discussed sooner than later, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that, that is properly winterized and ready to go in the spring. I noticed the, um, building for the irrigation down at the pines is in, it looks good, I saw the electricians wiring it all up, do we know if the Y department has, has wired it, uh, connected yet?
Everything's up and running, we're just, the irrigation system will be installed in the next few weeks.
Awesome, uh, wanna remind everyone, Halloween night is Thursday night, it's not anticipated to be a great night, it's gonna be a little rainy, maybe a little chilly, please, please, drive carefully, every year, I see some people, uh, with their wet leaves, they drive a little too fast, there's a lot of kids in the streets, um, just be cautious.
And trick-or-treating is five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Thank you, trick-or-treating is five-thirty to seven-thirty, remember that, young kids, and so you can get home and get to bed and not be on a sugar high, get your homework done, and the last thing I wanna say is, uh, best selected Denise, I know we're gonna, I, I will miss you while you're gone, and I wanna caution you against trying to be a superhero like last time and coming back before you're really fit to come back.
Duly noted.
It doesn't help, it does, it's not gonna help any of us.
See you next year.
If, if, if you try to come back early and it extends your time away from us, that, that's not good for anybody, so, please, I, I wish you the best of luck, I think it's gonna have great results based on the last time, and don't rush back, be, take your time.
Bill, Mike, you wanted to go back?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, um, Denise deserves a lot of credit for all the stuff she did for Pumpkin Fest as well, she put a lot of effort into that, and that doesn't get done without her, so.
Okay, um, so, um, where were we, Selectman Time Report, so, I will go to me too on going ahead, I was just gonna, um, basically say thanks to Denise, because she did do a lot of work, and she did do a lot of setup and what have you, and she should've been duly noted for what she did over there and what have you. Again, like Bill said, I was gonna say to you, best of luck with the operation, town people are gonna probably sorely miss you, um, but we'll manage, I'm sure, only a phone call away.
So you will.
So, the other thing is.
So are you.
So, the other thing is, is I did, um, I met with, um, the, Rennie, the highway cemetery, water department, um, I think that was it, and basically, um, the highway superintendent wanted to basically just kinda have a quick discussion with everybody about, um, plowing, um, they wanted to talk about help being intertwined and what have you, um, we talked about that, I iterated that they need to go back to their boards and talk to their boards before any decisions can be made, um, so that was discussed, it was briefly discussed about moving the, um, bins from the, uh, water department building to the highway department, they discussed that a little bit more, it was discussed, location, et cetera, et cetera. It was also discussed, um, on equipment needs and what have you, who needed what and where and when, um, which, there was some pretty high expectations, but as I said, the town doesn't have a lot of money, so why don't you guys do what you need to do, but keep in mind that we're on a broken budget, so that was talked about. Um, I did ask the Colin from the water department to write you guys a letter and ask them to bring you guys up to speed on what's going on with the building, which I see he did, um, really not too much, I don't think, else that went on there, uh, more of a, kind of a, maybe a bit session, I don't know what you wanna call it, just to try and. Get, get everyone together and figure out what needs to be done, so, really, nothing was said, nothing was voted on, and they were gonna go to their heads and talk to their heads and then come back to us. So, I didn't really have anything else.
Can I ask you a question while you're at it? I know that you and Denise were going to meet with the Haverhill Athletic Department, uh, with regards to the boats and the crew.
This Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday's coming up, okay, my bad.
Yep. Go ahead, Ed.
Um, I, I think everything's been said, I, I do, I was at the cable meeting, but, uh, we already talked about that earlier, uh, I don't have anything else.
All right, Kathy?
Um, yes, so, I went to the, um, Scouts Honor Roll, um, Ceremony, Denise was there, um, it was very entertaining, which I hadn't expected, it was fairly funny most of the time, they had some really great skits, I think it was a good time, but always nice to see these young people involved in something very positive, involved in community service as part of earning their badges, and in general, just having a good time. Since the message board isn't working, I'll just throw out there, 'cause I work at Whittier Botec, that we do have an open house this Sunday, on November third, from one to four, anybody's welcome, um, we have some new areas there, we have an engineering area that's pretty cool, we have a new, um, dental area that's very cool to see, um, our allied health area continues to grow, our regular shops can, continue to expand, um, it's pretty cool to go through the building and just see, see what's going on, the machine tech shop, um, got a huge grant and, and redid everything, really, really neat machines down there, I don't know what they do, but they are very cool to look at, and, um, everything will be open, this is the one time of year that the whole school building is open, all the shops, all the academic side, so, people can really come through and see what's going on there. I had a couple other things, just like a thought that popped into my head as these things do, that it would be nice, I don't know if it's possible, to have some type of public skating area and during the wintertime, I don't know if, maybe at the, down at the River Pines, maybe where the, um, that flattish football field, if it's flat enough to board, put some boards on it and put a little bit of water there, it would be nice to see, um, some general recreation areas in use, you know, during the winter months, we have a nice sledding hill at, at VZ Park, we don't really have a safe skating area, so that was a thought. And the other thing that I have is kind of a concern, I continue to see, um, debris put outside buildings, I'm assuming it's when people move out, and it stays there for weeks and weeks and weeks, and I'm not sure what it's supposed to become of this, there's been this furniture on the side of this apartment building on Washington Street, it originally had a sign free, but now it's just, nobody's gonna want it, it's soaking wet, it's falling into the sidewalk, and I'm not sure what is supposed to become of it, suppose the people moved out and left it, what happens next?
So, it would be either code enforcement or building inspector.
The Board of Health, it's a health issue.
So, I need to report that to the Board of Health, okay, I, I'll be glad to do that, I, I feel like it's been there now for over a month, and, uh, like I said, nobody's going to want it now that it's soaking, soaking wet, um, when are you coming back again?
I'm unsure.
Oh, oh, okay, so how, how long are we on our own for again?
I will likely be back, I'm just not sure what, when for your meeting, um, early December, and then I will likely be part-time through December as I go through first, uh, visit the third.
I don't know if you do like, um, we used to in the past when I was on the finance board early on, they were like, the Selectman would just put out some light refreshments and all the town boards and committees, and some townspeople, some people that used to be on boards used to stop by sometime on a meeting night in December, I always thought that was kind of a nice home-style folksy thing to do, I don't know if you still do that, but I'd be glad to, um, help out and organize that, and I'm not talking about a big, um, high-maintenance thing, just, it'd be a night where we normally meet, but we maybe meet for half an hour before, do the warrants, and then just invite all the boards and committees to come in and socialize a little bit, and, uh, have something to eat and a little non-alcoholic drinking, there we go.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Is that it? Is that it for your list?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so now we're moving on to, um, older unfinished business, starting with Kathy.
Um, I don't have any up the top of my head.
Okay, um, Ed?
I'm all set.
I'm all set, Bill?
No, sir, not tonight, thank you.
And Mike?
Nope.
Bill, can I just ask a question, since you're talking about December meetings, um, the last several years, you have not met the week of Christmas, the meeting that week would be Monday, December twenty-third, what are your thoughts on meeting that week?
Uh, I would, I think it's a very busy week myself, I don't know what the other board members wanna do, but I think people do shopping and what have you, up to you guys.
Not unless it's something pressing.
Right.
So, on the ninth, we would do all of your license renewals, and then you would, um, vote someone to sign the warrants for that week, as we've done in the past, so that works for you all?
Mm-hmm.
I thought that's why we got paid the big bucks to come in here on the holidays.
Um, other items not responsibly anticipated at the time of posting, Mike?
Nope.
Bill?
No, sir.
Hey, no, Ed?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, correspondence, minutes from the October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen executive session, minutes from the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting, um, innovation to the Veterans Day service, and invitation.
Yes.
To the Veterans Day service, November eleventh at eleven A M. at the Central Fire Station, the middle.
It's in the daytime this time? It's not?
Eleven A M.
Veterans Day is usually, it's Memorial Day, it's the evening.
We have the day off.
So, I'm gonna comment on that, he is looking for someone to R S V P. about, um, who plans to speak, do you want to let me know that, or do you wanna decide that?
I don't, I don't let Dave off.
Veterans Day, yeah.
Mike spoke well last year, it was my thoughts.
So, it's up to you all, if one of you wants to get back to Dave, or if you'd like me to, um.
Well, who wants to speak? Mike, do you wanna speak?
I've done it the last, like, three or four times.
Okay.
Somebody else should probably do it, I can, but somebody else.
I should, I could do that, I'm available.
Okay, I'll let Dave know.
All right, so Ed will take care of that. Okay, moving on, the middle and high school project informational neighborhood meeting, invitation. And then the cable system current, um, asset inventory. And then, I think, adjournment, I can't really see out my glasses.
Just expand on that, um, on the last, uh, next to last, they are having a, uh, informational meeting on, uh, Thursday, October thirtieth, at the high school cafeteria.
I think it was, it's not public, though, they were inviting the neighborhoods.
Neighborhood.
They were inviting the abutting neighbors only, I believe.
Ah.
Uh, it, it seemed to me that they were, at the meeting, that they were more so than just the immediate neighbors, they really wanted to talk about the communities, the impact of the school building on, on, on the whole community, really, 'cause it's gonna affect all of us, so if, I think it's, it's more open to more than just the immediate neighbors, is what the implication I got.
Okay, thank you, so, we have adjournment now, Ed.
Eight-thirty-six.
Eight-thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
And I need signatures if you have not.
I did, I got you already.
Just some, one board member needs to sign, those are the individual timesheets.
So that can be.
And then, can you hand this to Bill?